Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the second evening of our work session for the 2023 proposed budget. Tonight, we will start with City Manager Chad Ubel.
Mayor and Council, last night at the end of the budget session, we were about to go over the CIP, and I asked for a pause so we could do a few revisions. You have the 2023 capital improvement plan in front of you. I just want to note a couple of housekeeping issues that are related to the budget, and then we'll move into Kurt's section of the budget. So on page one of this CIP document that was in front of you, placed in front of you, the first note was that midway through the page, we are proposing two police patrol cars for a total of 102,000. We discussed that last night. We had the wrong amount in the packet. If you then turn to page two, you'll see that the ban shell improvements are listed twice on this page. One amount is 300,000 from the facility fund. You've approved that through the facility fund through council action at a previous meeting. We, as we continue to do more structural analysis of that facility, finding that we do have some improvements that are over 300,000. So we are recommending that we use ARP funds for 285. So I guess, I'm sorry, I did those backwards in order. You get the 285 on the, on the top of the page or toward the top of the page from ARPA, and then 300,000 toward the bottom for facility fund. And then I think the other change was on the middle of page three, we have the 406 account that's engineering. In the previous iteration of your CIP, we had 90,000 for that project, but we do have the total project now listed for 130, and that does match the budget and what we were proposing in the budget. CIP was incorrect. The budget you received was correct. Incorrect, sorry. And CIP correct in your budget? And I think that was it. I'm just gonna look to Jessica for a second, but I think those are the, what I would call, housekeeping changes to the CIP for 2023.
Any questions regarding that? George?
So we had that list of initiatives last night that were all ARPA funds. It included some vehicles. We had like Madison Play Space, ban shell improvements, fire equipment apparatus. That's all ARP funding or recommended ARP funding. The council previously approved 300,000 facility fund. We think we're gonna need that 585,000 to fix that facility. So we need two funding sources. And then further, there likely will be a third funding source, and that's the donation, community-wide donation and fundraising effort that's happening. So there's yes, yes.
Any other questions at all? Okay, we'll ask Chief Biddle from the Fire Department come up and go through his piece of the board budget there.
Mayor and Council, I will be presenting the Fire Department's 2023 proposed budget. Just a quick overview of it, I think we're roughly $22,000 over the 22 budget. And there were a number of, there was actually five line items. I'd like to kind of point out why that increase occurred. The vast majority of the line items have been reduced, but if I could just quick cover, actually four line items. The first one is overtime. We had a, I had a meeting with Jessica concerning overtime, and we've kind of grossly underfunded that line item for the last three, four years, and we felt it was important to try to get our overtime to a realistic number. So we upped that from 88,000 to 100. The next one I'd like you to take a look at would be our maintenance, our 4309. And that is maintenance repair of apparatus, cars, et cetera. And just, just to be perfectly honest with you, our, our fire engines are getting old, and I want to quick do a shout out to Central Garage, because with the 30-plus thousand dollars of expenditures we had in 2022, realistically, if we had to take that to a vendor up in the cities, we'd probably be looking at seven times that amount for real expense for the city. And that includes not only gas and, and travel and overtime for firefighters to bring those vehicles up, but also labor. We particularly have one engine that's been our problem trial for the last couple of years, and we will discuss replacement of that vehicle in a, in a bit with capital improvement and the bonding. So the next one is education. We upped that from, and that is 5809. And last year, we historically had it, had that at $18,000. We dropped it to 9,000 in 2022. And that was just a, I hate to say the Hail Mary, trying to save budgets and staff during the 2022 budget process. That 9,000 that was put into 2022 budget covered paramedic recertification. As you all are aware of, we're an all hazards department. We provide confined space trench rescue across the board. All these disciplines require training. And what we did or what we have in place is instructors for all those disciplines except hazmat. And I'll kind of jump into the hazmat thing with the ARPA funding. But we typically send our firefighters to train the trainer courses where they go and actually become an instructor. And then they come back in safer confined space. They'll come back, instruct and certify the firefighters to that level. 2022 budget, we don't have funding. We didn't have funding to do that. So we're kind of a year behind as far as getting our instructors recertified to come back and teach. So that $9,000 reflects getting, I think we'll have ice rescue, confined space, structural collapse earmarked for 2023. So that's where that extra money's going. So we can bring the instructors back and, and teach. We also had an increase in our 6509, our small equipment fund. And it was just a few thousand dollars. But just to give you an idea with that, I, the Fire Department's currently utilizing two four-gas monitors that we borrowed from Rochester Fire. So we're kind of earmarking replacement in 2023 to get those, those four gas monitors back. So big picture wise, the, the budget, like I said, was just a smidge over the 2022 budget, but we really did fare fairly well in the ARP funding. And is there any questions? I know we've, we've discussed this over a number of months. Air packs, SCBA bottles, which we approved a couple of council meetings ago. Face pieces, the, the one thing I wanted to hit on, we, we had a discussion, Jessica and I, a month ago. We were attempting to get state and federal funding for our hazmat research class that fell through a week before our meeting. And I had asked if we could get that included in the ARP funding so we could bring instructors down. We have five firefighters that aren't certified as hazmat techs. And typically, if you run the numbers, it's cheaper to actually bring instructors in and teach the entire department than to individually send them out. It'd be about a wash cost-wise. So we're kind of getting a bigger bang for the buck, bringing them in, having a research for all the firefighters to, to get certified and get again. So, so that was the, the place marker for our ARP funding for hazmat. Any questions on ARP stuff? The other big ticket item we had in capital improvement was the aerial truck. And just to go back to our maintenance issues that we're having, we have a typically what I see throughout the state with the types of engines that all of us have as departments within the state. You're usually looking at about a 15-year replacement cycle for engines and about a 20-year replacement cycle for trucks. It's, it's a whole lot different than, say, what George and I had 30 years ago. These trucks, you know, basically sat. There was an engine and a pump. And if it didn't run much, it didn't get broken. And we typically replaced a 28-year-old truck with about 18, 19,000 miles on it. That's not the case nowadays. Our trucks are getting beat up. I, I think our newest engine has close to 50,000 miles. It, it's just a different time, and the trucks are different. They're, they're, I, I mentioned that, I think, for a few of you back when we purchased the aerial trucks, these trucks are actually smarter than I am. There's so many computers and chips and everything has sensors and everything else, and it's amazing. You start using them, you start going on calls, they get pounded and, and the issues and problems that you run into. Now, the 2007 Pierce that was originally earmarked in the CIP for replacement, I don't think we're looking at replacing that 2007. I think we're looking at replacing a 2012 Rosenbauer. And that's partially and mostly just from the mechanics issues that they're having with that truck. That truck's redlined and out of service all the time. And it's, this is gonna get confusing. Typically, you look for a single-source dealer. Rosenbauer, when we purchased the 2012 Rosenbauer truck, they, they sold us a Spartan cab with a Rosenbauer body, but they promised us that they would consider it a single source, so that, meaning they'd cover all the problems with the cab. Well, they changed their own cab in 2013. They did this. So what happens is you have Central Garage calling Spartan down in Illinois trying to get parts. Parts don't come. You call Rosenbauer that does this, and nobody wants to take responsibility for it. And we just had issue after issue after issue with the 2012 Rosenbauer. So that's why we're looking to replace that within the CIP. Any, any other questions? In the budget that?
George?
That truck was just placed, no, it's back in reserve at Central Fire right now. We, we had Engine One down with a generator issue a few weeks back, so that's back in frontline service.
I'd move for tentative approval. Second?
Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none? Although all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
All right, Patrick Minton, Facilities Director. First-time presenter, longtime listener. Gonna go over a couple of different funds that we have, as well as talk about building, maintenance and park maintenance. So mine is I'll go through this review schedule just in, in order, and then I'll give you the page number and the fund to help everybody stay on task here. First one talking about is the general fund revenues. So if you go on, look at, look at page two, it's 32219. It's non-business license permit. So there's no change in this, but I just thought it's, some of these will be more of an interest that I'll highlight for you. This is one of them. No change in this light item. This is banner fees. We have banners that we put up at Central Park and Franklin Street locations. We charge the community $25 per location. Right now, if you go down Franklin Street, you'll see the family art day sign is up right at the foot of Franklin. And we're no longer doing the Mankato Street banner, but it, it's a small amount of revenue that comes in to the city. It's a thousand dollars in the budget. We make that budget every year, but we look at it more as a real nice service to the community. Moving on to page four, the charges for services, culture and recreation. 34601. These, these are, this is revenue from front porch management. So as you know, we have agreements with front porch to manage the campground. They submit monthly revenue payments to the city during the seasons of May through October. We're looking at, we're expected to take in $180,000. And so far, they're having a, a strong season, and we think that will continue on for next year. Another one on page four towards the bottom is 36209 rents. So we do get rental revenue from a host of different local organizations. We've got the Winona State University Dock, the American Cruise Lines went on a tour boat. We've got Boathouse Restaurants. And all of these, the revenue goals from these services, we expect to increase from 66,290 in, in this current year to 96,090. And a lot of that has to do with the, some of the rates are going up, but also just a success of, of these groups.
Patrick, quick question. Under the American Cruise, does that include American Queen Cruise Line as well?
Yep, it encompasses all of the, yep, all of the different boats.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to general fund expenditures. If you could go to page 29. Again, I'm not gonna hit on all of these, just some of the highlights. This one is building maintenance staff, 41941. We have four full-time staff for three buildings. And those buildings are right here, the City Hall. We've got staff at the Friendship Center and the Masonic, and then also at the Winona Public Library. So on a normal week, one full-time staff is assigned to the library, one at Friendship Center, and then two at City Hall. And of these four, one is the building maintenance lead, and this person is responsible for the HVAC controls at a host of different rec centers like the East and West Rec, the Aquatic Center, Sobieski Boathouse Restaurant. These four individuals have cleaning routines. They do room setup, light maintenance. They clear snow from, from the walks. They clean floors. They mow the grass at City Hall. There is grass to the public washing. There's a strip of grass here in that City Hall. They also mow at Library and at the Friendship Center. The, the lead sets up boiler inspections. They do fire alarm sprinkler inspection. And then all four staff have boiler licenses required by the LMC. So moving on from there.
George has a question.
Yes, about the boiler license. What, what level of boiler license are they at?
I, I don't know what level that they're at, but they, they check the boilers daily, and all of the boilers are monitored, so regardless of the time of day that they're, the fail time, somebody is ready to respond.
They don't need chief engineer papers for these boilers, do they?
I know I'm saying no.
So I don't know which level they're at, but I, they do not need, need that certification.
About the special license. Thank you.
Another one of interest on page 29 is 3409, the technical services. There's $11,600 in there. This is contracted services such as HVAC, the elevator alarm, the annual backflow preventer, the RPZ. And there was an increase, slight increase from 2022 is $1,300 up. We're expecting costs to increase across the board. And then on 4301, I think we get, turn page 30, please. 4301, this is maintenance labor. We've got $19,000. And maintenance labor, this is service call labor. So in 2022, just to give you an idea what, what these are. So 2022, the bigger items that we had were roof repair here at City Hall. There were broken water pipes at City Hall. This number tends to move around a little bit as it has in the last few years. Just the year before in 2021, we spent over $25,000 to replace the fire panel and added in some access control and some other security updates. So it, it does move a little bit kind of based on, based on need and what's happening in the buildings. The, the next line item after that is 4309, and this is also tied to service calls. So the, this is the parts for the service callouts. You know, big items would be the parts for like the boiler pump went out this current year. That was $2,500. We've done roof repair, AC repair. But we did, we're confident reducing this number $2,000 over the previous year just based, based on looking at the previous history. So the next one to go to would be 6119, which is, let's see. Also on page 30, so it's the operating supplies. We have $10,000 in there. No change from the previous year, but this is a whole lot of cleaning supplies. It's paper products in the building. It's paint for doing offices, door hardware, some tools in there. And then page 31, the small equipment, small number in there, but these, this $500 we use for tool upgrades. You know, the last year, they got a drill press and a chop saw. What, what staff like to do is they'll wait towards the end of the year and assess the year. See what, see what they, what they need to help them do a better job and then call at the end of the year. So it's also something that we could hold off the spending on if we needed to. The last, the last one on here is a big one, 7309 improvements other than building. So this category had the largest amount of budget reductions for building maintenance. We originally requested $810,000, but to keep everything within balance, we eliminated some work here at City Hall. We eliminated the roof and chimney work and carpeting throughout City Hall. We are keeping in the elevator upgrades and paying through that as previously had been mentioned with the Equipment Bond. We are keeping in City Hall security updates through ARPA funding, and then keeping in the City Hall, the HVAC controller paid for through by the Equipment Bond, and then also the LED lighting project that's happening throughout a handful of buildings, and that's paid for out of Equipment Bond. Any questions on maintenance or part building maintenance?
Let's see, Patrick. So you're, you're saying the thing, because that's, that's a large change there. The 810 that was requested versus the 332 that's recommended, and we cut some things, and I get that. We're, we're deferring the maintenance. Is that, I'm sorry, was that just for, for this building here for City Hall?
Okay, those numbers are reflected in the CIP.
Yeah, and so we'll, we'd likely come back to some of those items next year.
Yep, correct.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, moving on to the next one. If we could go to page 62. This is park maintenance. So the park maintenance, it was noted in the 2018 Comprehensive System Plan that the NRPA, that's the National Recreation and Parks Association, they reported nationally that operations and maintenance is the primary work responsibility for park and recreation agencies. And based on these existing parks and features in our system that you've heard Chad say for years, it accounts for 3,000 acres of parkland. There's 27 parks, 13 playgrounds, five recreation centers. According to the NRPA, our park maintenance team should have between 15 to 27 FTEs for the work that they do. Our maintenance team currently consists of 12 workers and one working superintendent. They have a rotating crew that works 365 days a year, including holidays. The bulk of their work happens weekdays from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And they perform maintenance all across the park system. They're at the aquatic center adding chemicals. They prep the ball fields for adult new sports and T-ball, kickball, softball. They clean and prep rental facilities for Winona's graduates from weddings, family reunions, and they remove a lot of garbage. So I had, I had a trivia question in here. How many garbage cans? I'm looking at George because he probably knows. Sorry, how many garbage cans in, in the, in the system? So we've got 275 garbage cans within the city that park maintenance is cleaning every few days. And Mike, Mike Dern and I sat down and we calculated how many garbage bags that is. And it's 18,000 garbage bags that we purchase in a year for 275 cans. But just if you can picture this, right now it's 275 cans. And there's, we've got 13 staff, and they've got a couple of other things to do other than removing garbage. So they're a talented bunch and, and hardworking. But really, their greatest challenge is keeping up with the high expectations that the community has, that they have of their own work while maintaining this relatively small group. And with that, the park system keeps growing. You know, we've added numerous parks and amenities such as Levy Park, and that requires additional mowing, trimming. There's irrigation work. There's work done on the water feature. They're down for event prep, and they do special repairs. But even, even the small upgrades that we've added require some extra maintenance. The Bouldering Park, wonderful addition. But they don't drive through with a mower anymore, so it requires some blowing. It requires weeding, trimming, crash removal. And you know, as these facilities and resources age, they take more time, they take more cost, and they take more experience, which is one thing that we're very likely lucky to have all to maintain. So looking at page 62, some of the highlights from this one, Technical Services. This is a, this is a large reduction from the previous year. It was $14,000 in 2022. We've reduced it to $2,000 for this year's budget. And what we're doing is attempting to shift around some previously orchestrated contract work for being able to do some of the work in-house and contracting other components of it. So there's nice savings right there. On page 63, 4201, that's disposal. We've got $11,000 in there, and this is disposal to Miller Scrap. It's waste collection at PI. They've got six-yard dumpsters there. We do recycling from Westfield, Holzinger Lodge, Park Maintenance, building the ban shell. It's Boathouse Recycling. And this number actually decreased $6,000 from '22, and we did that based on some actuals from the previous year. So we're looking for some savings there. Another one of interest is 4209, the cleaning services. It's $70,000, and this is for portable satellite toilets in the park system. So that, that's another number that's important for people to know that we have 48 satellite. I wasn't gonna quiz you because I know Mayor knows this one. But there are 48 satellite toilets in the park system, and we contract that part out, but it's, there's a cost for it. So most of the units are cleaned. They're all cleaned at least twice a week. So they clean on Fridays and on Mondays, and then many are cleaned three days a week. But, but total is 107 cleanings a week that's done. That is not done by park maintenance. That's contracted out.
Okay, here it comes. You, you, wonderful, great. I love Park Rec. I'm a, a, a long-time fan, frequent user. It's, it's, it's the ongoing maintenance. You're, you're, you're talking about it, and I, I, I want to hear. This will probably be a recurring question for me, making sure that we're planning for this. We've got aging infrastructure. You and I have had conversations on, on those park, those, those playgrounds. How many of those, do I mention it legally? Have we got, we've got some concerns. Should they come out? Are they obsolete? Do they present a litigation risk to us? You know, the, the Bouldering Park, the, the, the ice wall, all these things that we're, we're servicing. How do we pay? Are, are we making adequate plans so we can maintain what we have? And I want to maintain it, but I, I, I want to make sure as a council that we're, we're, we're aware of this and that we're making financial plans to make sure we're keeping up what, what we have. Are we doing that?
We are, and we're very intentional about how we're doing it. So there is not a single park project that happens without a conversation of how do we maintain it? without a conversation of how do we maintain it? What are the long-term costs? What is it going to cost to 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 refurbish, to renovate? So we also operate, I'll get into it in just a little bit, but we're also tapping into local expert groups such as the Winona area mountain bike riders. So we don't, so we don't have to maintain the trails. We have a group to do it. So the the rec alliance, they can maintain the trails at Sugarloaf. So so the big conversation is how do we build these new, these parks and amenities in a way that can be maintained at a less costly, at a less cost. And then also, how can we tap into these community user groups and and harness their energy and enthusiasm? So so the answer to your question is very intentional on every project that we do.
Good, highly important, I think, to our community that we maintain the assets that we have. And and important for for our group that we're making sure we're we're delivering the funding so that you you can do that. So, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Mayor and council.
Yep.
I could just interject. Patrick did an excellent job answering that question. And I think he hit all the highlights on in a sense, our annual maintenance and what park maintenance does. Again, trying not to step in where I don't need to, but I must say, when you ask the question, are we adequately funding for the park system? The answer is no. What Patrick answered is his answer is yes. On an annual basis, yes, park maintenance is doing unbelievable job. But if you remember, Patrick referenced the system-wide parks plan. There's forty-three million dollars worth of deferred maintenance. There's deferred maintenance in the C I P, and you'll see it in Laura's budget here in a minute that is taken out. The Aquatic Center is thirty years old, and we've done as best we can. Again, park maintenance on an annual basis does a great job to get that going every year. It needs major repairs and there's to Patrick's point, I've already lost the number. You know, there's twenty-seven parks. I remember that obviously, but the number of facilities, those all have deferred maintenance. They all have roofs. They all have HVAC systems. They playground should be taken out. And again, forty-three million dollars worth of deferred maintenance in the parks system. Now, the flip side of that is, I think we're taking some appropriate steps to start funding for that, the depreciation and recreation in the budget I mentioned last night. The establishment of the fourth park fund alongside the infrastructure facility and equipment fund starts to help that process. So excellent answer, yes. I mean, I had to say no from the long-term maintenance standpoint, and yet we are making strides to correct that. It's just there's a lot of deferred maintenance.
I appreciate the context. I understood Patrick's answer. I understand your answer as well. And and this in my, from from this council person, this this needs to remain forefront in our minds that for for the long term, we we've got, if we're wanting to attract people, we're wanting to present to the public our awesome trails around the lake and and whatnot. I just look at what that's going to cost to repave that. Okay, so you know, to our finance people and our pro-correct people, let's let's make sure that when I know we're turning the ship by with with adding depreciate, charging for depreciation, yet that account is substantially in the negative now. So we had a long ways to go. So thank you for the context.
Pam, you had a question?
Yes, I, speaking of, speaking of cooperative arrangements with with groups throughout the community. Patrick, you and I talked about Latch Island and the need for some cleanup over there and a few, just a few additional amenities. The Latch Island, the people at Latch Island would be very willing to help with that cleanup or take on that cleanup with the city's, you know, infrastructure help. Is that still in the budget?
It's not. I know, I know that was a request that you had. We added into the C I P and it is not in the budget.
Okay, I think that that is a public health hazard. We have apparently exposed rebar and rebar that is that is not exposed, but could be stepped on leftover from previous structures there that really needs to come out. If we do nothing more, we need to, we need to make sure people are not going to be hurt by that. And I don't know how much that would cost, but I would strongly suggest that it's a worthwhile. It's a worthwhile expenditure. We don't need to have people getting hurt on that beach.
At at last report from park maintenance, the rebar, they believe, is removed. So they went in midsummer when the river was down six feet from where it was. They they combed it. They're not seeing it. It has been an issue. It's been a longstanding issue. We believe that we have it. Cannot be a hundred percent sure, but but the bigger, I get the the bigger picture is, you know, what else are we doing to help bring that area up?
Right. I happen to be over there. It was during the, I was during one of those meteor showers. So I went over to the bridge to to look at the, look at the sky. And there were a lot of people over there with a gigantic bonfire. And every time they burn a lot of pallets or whatever they're burning, we end up with stuff on the beach that could be dangerous to people. Other people I have, so that's just one point. We do need to watch after that and clean up, clean up Latch Beach. It's I think it's one of the assets of the cities that we that we don't too pay enough attention to. I forgot what I was going to say, but I would appreciate coming back with a figure for how much it will cost to clean that up. I, oh, I understood that the rebar has not really been been cleaned up, but there's still rebar down at the down at the downstream end of the the beach. Okay.
So Mayor and Council, just a little bit further context, because I worked on this with Marty Mullen. We have what we think are the best way I can describe it is like like a copy of the latch beach house footings. And so park maintenance, year after year, will go and, all right, they'll find, you know, they'll use this basically copy because we don't have the original plans from the original beach house. And they'll mark and they can start to see where, okay, you know, every I don't know, Brian, help me out, whatever, every two feet or every four feet, there was rebar for the footings. And I think what Patrick's referring to is we tried to pull as much of that out as possible. And we try and comb that every year before the summer. Again, not a hundred percent sure it's all out. We got a quote to have a private contractor come in and remove like actually go in based on this copy and, you know, detect to see where the rebar was. And I think it was just under eight thousand to do to have all done the rebar removed. It would require some excavation and pull it out all out. Again, if you'd like us to get an updated quote, do some more research to see maybe how much rebar is left. We certainly can do the research part, and we can certainly bring something back to council outside of this budget. So you have a a cost estimate.
I think that sounds, that sounds, that sounds like a good idea. My concern is just the public health, and so I'm not, I'm not the engineer. I'm not the, not the judge of that. But let's watch after that, that Latch Island park as a city asset as well as as the others. I don't think there's any other park where people would be allowed to have these enormous bonfires and kind of a lawless world over there after after midnight. So that's my concern. Thanks. Long speech.
And Pam, last comment, because it's important to note. Again, I know in my recent time with with park maintenance, there were numerous times where I would get a call from some very observant boathouse and boat club members. And park maintenance would literally drop everything and go over and pick up before the bonfire would start. So we were trying to be proactive of, yep, lawless area. You've got some pallets and mattresses and couches and yep, it's all piled up, ready to burn. And our crew would, you know, park maintenance would drop everything, go over there and try and pick it up before the fire would start or before that evening. So we are mindful at least that from that standpoint, some of it. Again, I guess human nature, we, they get ahead of us sometimes.
Along with, sorry, go ahead, George.
Well, just in regards to the bike path. Ten years ago, the last time that bike path was maintained is the Coca-Cola company, the Telsted family in town. They kicked off the campaign and they came up with over three hundred thousand dollars to overlay that bike path and then other contributors as well, too. So there are individuals that, as you mentioned, if they believe in something like the group believed in Sobieski Park, they will help out. You know, they're not afraid to dig in, raise funds, whatever it may be. So and again, you know, a big thanks to them for their contribution of ten years ago. So in holding up pretty good.
I thank you for that. Page fifty or sixty-three. Looking at fifty-nine oh nine, some purchase services. Now, this kind of ties in with with the maintenance we're talking about. So some of these are agreements. Oh, they're all agreements, but we've got agreements, Winona area mountain biking, like you mentioned, for for trail cleanup. We've got the Recreation Alliance, which assists with the maintenance of the trail and the climbing features up at Sugarloaf. We also have agreements with Woodlawn Cemetery, agreements with Westfield. There's weed control agreements at all the, at many of the parks, including Sobieski, Levy Park, the Fields. And we have also purchased services for the staffing, as I mentioned, at at P I campground. This number is up from two thousand and twenty-two. We're expecting just additional service costs and then cost increases across the board. Page sixty-four, six one one three landscaping supplies. And this number is up slightly over the previous year. This is your your beautification project. So landscaping supplies such as flower baskets, dirt, flowers, mulch, fertilizer, other landscaping needs. Next one to look at would be six one one nine, our operating supplies. This is more of a general operating supplies, but it's items such as waste bags for those two hundred and seventy-five garbage cans. It's material glue tubing, batteries, shop supplies. We also purchased the memorial benches out of this fund, picnic tables for the park system, dock repairs come out of here, plumbing supplies and even repairs to hardcore services. And this one, we increased it five thousand dollars over two thousand and twenty-two, mostly due to cost increases. The last one that I have to mention on here, page sixty-four, goes over into sixty-five, seventy-three oh nine improvements. The number is at three hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two. The projects that have made it to the two thousand and twenty-three budget at this level so far are improvements to the band shell that Chad's mentioned a couple of times. That's coming out of facilities fund. That's in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And there's a Prairie Island shower and store upgrades. And then there's an amount for the Madison play space that's coming with ARP funding.
Steve, you have a question?
You requested, or the the department requested was one point nine and and around a three seventy-four. What got cut?
Yeah, great question. Big number that got, big number that got cut. That additional monies would have been used for dock upgrades and dock repairs throughout the park system, repairs to Gaybrick Ball Field. I mean, currently the Gaybrick Ball Field. The pitching mound is not aligned even with home plate. There's just numerous repairs that need to be done there. There's the removal of the latch shelter was in there from the C I P. Prairie Island restrooms were in there that are necessary. A big one is repair of the hardcore surfaces. So the tennis courts, basketball courts. So we want to add pickleball courts throughout the system. So those dollars got cut. And about those hardcourts, I mean, they really need to get resurfaced every three to five years. And right now, you know, we did it last time. Was it seventeen, eighteen? Something like that, you know, we 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 did what we could. We we had all of the tennis courts in the city assessed for the cost, and some of them are, had been left unfinished for so long that it's just wasn't even feasible. The cost, for example, the cost to redo the Windcrest tennis court for the price to do just that one court, we were able to do not valley basketball and tennis and a host of other ones, a band shell tennis courts.
The items between the one point nine and three and the three hundred and seventy-four thousand, those are all in the C I P.
Yep.
They're listed, so we can see what was, okay, thank you.
Playground upgrades are in there as well.
So I, you know, again, the point is is it's 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 maintaining. It comes back to the maintenance challenge.
Oh, yeah, right. And there's, there's not enough, there's not enough not enough spending coming through to do it.
You you were great on your statistics. How much it'd be great if we added up everything we spent on Park Rec, and we figured out against people's property taxes and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, how much they're paying per month for admission to our awesome park system. So anyway, I've said.
Well, and the majority of the park fees, and we talk about a lot of the parks and amenities that have fees attached, the vast majority of of the parks and recreations town is free.
Yep.
Three thousand acres of parkland you can use. You know, there's no cost to go on the pedestrian path around the lake. The majority is free.
So Mayor and Council, last night in the presentation we did, you saw part of, you see, you saw a portion of that. I think it was the this is going to be total recall, but I think the hundred and seventy thousand value home was four dollars for Park Rec.
Yeah.
That means recreation. Park maintenance is in the general fund, so we could recalculate it at some point. We could bring that Dieter chart back next year and do that calculation. But if if I had to estimate, I mean, I would probably say for both park maintenance and recreation, it's probably in that six to seven dollar range per month. Yep.
Thank you.
Got a couple more funds to go through with you. This first one's on page one, one hundred and twelve. It's the softball development fund. So so this softball fund, the city council approved by resolution, it's the recreational wage and fee schedule, and as part of that schedule, the the summer adult softball teams are assessed at sixty dollars per team. And then that money goes into this field development fund that's to be used with interest for for field enhancements and upgrades.
Excuse me, Patrick. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to mention that with that last account code seven three oh nine in the park maintenance department, we will adjust those numbers to reflect the five hundred and eighty-five thousand for the band shell improvements. Three hundred thousand again being from facilities and two hundred and eighty-five from A R P, as Chad mentioned earlier when discussing the C I P.
What line is that again? Where are we at?
Be on page sixty-four.
Okay, got it.
We would add the three hundred thousand.
Yep.
In the two eighty, two eighty-five is in there. We would just readjust from the copy that you've received. We would adjust that to add the three hundred thousand. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess I'm not sure if I said it. I think I caught that on seventy-three oh nine that it's the band shell, it's the Prairie Islands showers and store upgrades, and then it's also the Madison play space. I know that was a a big topic. All right, so so we covered the softball fund, sixty dollars per team. Got an ending balance in two thousand and twenty-one of three thousand eight hundred and forty. This year, we're adding fifty-nine more teams. We'll be adding in three thousand five hundred and forty.
I have a real quick question about the softball teams. I've heard that the maintenance cost for the beer cans after the softball games has been a point of issue this year. If we're charging the team sixty bucks, what do you think we're spending on cleanup after those teams leave their beer cans all replaced down there?
Yeah, it's it's something. It's some staff time.
Yeah.
It's better. It's been better this year than it was last year. Last year was better than the previous year. So it's there's still costs, though. I think the teams are getting it. There's kind of this this concept of now, and so they're just throwing cans all over. They pile them up. Over the last handful of years, they throw them in a pile. There used to be people in town that would come by on a bike and load it up and and take it and scrap it for cash, but the aluminum can prices have gone down so much that people aren't even doing that. So
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, but it, yep, you're right. It's something. The Levy Park Fund on a hundred and twenty and the Masonic Temple Fund on page one, one twenty-three. These were capital project funds that were created for bond projects. There's no expenditures projected. Um, these were uh, capital project funds that were created for bond projects. Um, there's no expenditures projected from these two. Um, the uh, the upgrades, the Masonic Temple, uh, just as you recall from presentation, are using uh, the ARP funding and equipment dollar funds to play, to pay for the HVAC upgrades, replace the heating, uh, air handling, ventilation, and um, nothing will be coming out of the fund for it. Next one on page one-twenty-six is the Trail Development Fund. So the recommended twenty twenty-three budget carries over these twenty twenty-two allocations uh, in the amount of three million, two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, and this is from state grants. So we had two million dollars from Riverfront Trail Grant, and then seven hundred thousand from the Bluff Traverse Phase One and five hundred and four thousand from Bluff Traverse Phase Two Grand. That's what's in the trail fund. And two more left to share with you. We got to jump back in the book a little bit here to page one-seventy. This would be the Recreation Fund Programs Improvements. It's six-one-seven, four-five-one-two-five, seventy-three oh nine. Uh, this, this was another, this was a big one. Uh, department requested five hundred and twelve thousand. Uh, we narrowed it down to thirty-five thousand, which is the LED lighting upgrade at Bud King Ice Arena, and that's paid out of the equipment bond. Um, so we cut four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars from the budget. Uh, this was CIP items, so you you're aware of these, but the the Aquatic Center floor and wall resurfacing, so this is the pool shell. Uh, the aquatic center, the concrete deck replacement, these are the cracks in the floor out there. And then um, also cut were from the budget were the Aquatic Center mechanical assessments um, as well as the skate park upgrades. And then the last one on here for improvements on page one-seventy-three would be uh, seventy, let's see, seventy-three oh nine, it's the Recreation Fund for Senior Center Improvements. So here we have money allocated for the HVAC at the Masonic Temple. It's a million dollars from from ARP, a million from the equipment bond. And which Chad may be aware of in the presentation yesterday, and then there's also five thousand dollars in LED lighting. So a lot happening.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion from Michelle. Well, and a second from Pam. Go ahead.
Mayor and Council, sorry. Um, much like last night, we have a little bit of a housekeeping change that needs a little bit of discussion, sorry.
That's fine.
Didn't catch you quick enough. Um, there's twenty thousand dollars allocated for Prairie Island that Patrick mentioned in the Park Maintenance uh, Budget. We would like to redistribute that. We've done some work this year with the camp store. We've gotten some preliminary designs for the replacement of that camp store. And we are currently, staff is currently working specifically Lucy with the county on a shared cost for a housing study. And we think that our allocation would be roughly twenty thousand uh, to partner with the county on a county-wide housing study. So we would like to shift those dollars over to planning because it's the same, basically, it's the same dollar amount. It would have zero impact on the tax levy. Um, it would just be a shift, but we, in order to shift that funding at this point, we would need your approval to move that to planning.
What is the difference in the housing study that we just did not too long ago in this one?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Our twenty-seventeen housing study, um, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, I was just on a call about housing. They recommend doing a housing study every three years. Um, that would put us at twenty twenty. Um, the reason the topic of housing came up is the county is proceeding with one, and we thought there might be cost savings by going in at the same time, and we share a housing market. So uh, we do need updated information. Our study is considered outdated. If we went for a grant, I think you have to be within three years to get uh, grant funding, so.
And so um, this will take into account all the new stock that's coming on the market and look at it countywide versus city.
Right, we would split out Winona, but we would be part of the whole.
Okay.
Thanks.
I would make a motion to amend my original motion, allocating that twenty thousand towards the whole housing study and removing it from the latch, no.
Park Maintenance Budget.
Prairie Island or Park Maintenance Budget.
Thank you.
I have a question. So does this mean that those uh, improvements will not be made this year?
So Mayor and Council, the line item in Park Maintenance uh, was for design costs. So to do design work, it really wasn't any improvements to the store, or actually, we're not making any improvements to the store because it's in the floodplain. So um, we think uh, that we have enough information from Owen Warren Keys. They did a report this year on the camp store, did some preliminary drawings, that we have enough information from that and like from that study or design work to move forward with the project. Um, of course, there will be additional design, we'll need like construction documents, but this at least um, provides um, enough of a a basis for us to seek uh, likely outdoor grant money or uh, deed money uh, or other, if we look for other funding sources, we have enough information from Owen Warren Key what to do, so.
Okay, on the amendment, we have a motion from Michelle, a second from Steve. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment passes. We had a motion from Michelle, second from Pam, an original motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Patrick, good job for your first time. Very, very good.
Thorough.
Thorough. I hate to see when you're really experienced. Good job.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Laura Holberg, Director of Park and Rec Services. Um, I'm going to be going over three funds, the Fine Arts Commission, Senior Advocacy, and Recreation. And we'll start on page twelve with the Fine Arts Commission. Um, so although uh, the Finance Commission was disbanded earlier in the year, there is a task force to reinstate a new commission, so there is still some amounts allocated here um, uh, for the advertising and a small supply budget as well.
I would move for tentative approval of that budget.
Oh, okay, second.
Motion from George, second from Michelle. Any discussion, questions of Laura? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, so now moving on to page seventy-seven with the Senior Advocacy Fund. Um, so much like Patrick, I won't go through every single item, but I'll kind of point out some specific um, things and then also maybe some explanation for so. So starting with the revenue, um, on page seventy-seven with thirty-three one oh one, uh, the federal grants. The first one you'll see there is that chore grant. So that one is funded entirely, that entire program is funded through that grant, so the issue we have is we estimate that's the amount of money that will be awarded. We don't apply until November. Um, and often we're not awarded that money until February, so later on you will see some money allocated to continue that program for the one month that it's not funded by that grant. But otherwise, um, all expenses for that program come out of this grant. Um, the next one you'll see is Information and Referral. Um, we call it INA. Sometimes you'll hear it referred to, but um, that is another federal grant. Um, and that is specifically for the Senior Advocacy Program. That is federal dollars through the um, Older Americans Act, um, specific for Senior Advocacy Services. Um, moving down, um, so as Chad mentioned yesterday in thirty-six-three-two-nine, we have the Winona County um, grant money. Um, so we were, we asked for an increase in in dollars for this year, but we were awarded the same amount as last year. So it's not reflected in this budget, but it has been um, corrected internally. Um, I believe it was asked when we brought the grant agreement for last year, how we come up with that number. So essentially what we do is we take the bottom line of the advocacy budget, um, we uh, remove the chore grant and that INA or INR amount, and then we split it in half, and that's what we request from the county. So just some explanation on that one. Um, moving on to page seventy-nine, um, you'll see salaries and wages, so employee services. We do have two full-time staff, two senior advocates, and then one part-time staff. So under that temporary employees, um, that part-time staff is entirely dedicated to that chore program, so that money is from that chore grant. Um, so depending on what we're awarded, um, sometimes that may change based on what we get from that grant. Um, and then moving down, although it's a small amount, um, on fifty-three oh two for postage, um, you'll see it's an increase from the previously, previous year, but again, that is through that chore grant. We do mail out billing, so we do get money for that as well. Um, otherwise, for the most part, it does stay the same in, on page eighty with sixty-one oh nine, we do have some small um, chore supplies, but again, coming from that chore grant, um, and other than that, uh, pretty much stays the same from last year. Um, is there any questions about anything specific about the advocacy fund?
I'd make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Portion of her.
Motion from Michelle, second from Pam.
Yeah.
Sorry, George. Any discussion questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, moving on to page one-sixty-three with Recreation. Um, starting with the revenue, um, so uh, we are coming out of pandemic. We are seeing people return um, uh, quite a large number of people. Our services and our attendance rates are almost back to where they were in twenty nineteen, not quite. Um, but we still aren't seeing the growth that we would have seen if we hadn't had a pandemic. So we haven't increased a lot of, we're not anticipating it as big increase in our revenue, so it will stay the same. Um, I do want to point out on three-eight-oh-eight-five Lake Lodge revenue, um, last year we had zero dollars. Um, but that was because it was included with three-eight-oh-eight-nine, so that's why you'll see a significant change in those two lines, because we've separated them out for twenty twenty-three. All right, um, and then moving on to page one-sixty-five, um, Recreation Admin. Um, we do have Employee Services uh, with one full-time staff um, in the Recreation Admin. And then Employee Services, and I did want to point out on three-four-oh-two under Bank Services. Um, we did switch to a new software service, so um, that's more conducive to our programming, much more user-friendly on the patron side of things. And it also does provide us some cost savings as well, so you'll see a decrease in that amount. On page one-sixty-six, um, so because of the restructure of our department, uh, we did decrease um, some items such as five-three-oh-one with telephone, five-three-oh-two with postage, um, education and travel memberships and subscriptions, just because of the way our department restructured, those people are no longer within those funds, so we remove those spending from those accounts. Um, and then again, down on uh, one-sixty-seven under Community Services, you'll notice a lot of zeros, again, because of the restructure um, with four-five-one-one-one, uh, again, staff, we don't have staffing in that. Um, Community Services Department now, so we removed on one-sixty-eight to Education and Travel Memberships and Subscriptions, so you'll see a lot of zeros in that one. Um, moving on to the bottom of one-sixty-eight with Recreation Programs. Um, within the Recreation Programs, we have three full-time coordinators and two full-time administrative assistants. Um, and then we also have our temporary employees for the entire department, so that's Friendship Center and um, Recreation Programs. So the way we budget for that number is we take what we would assume we would spend if we were open every single day that we thought we would be, full staffing, full programs. Um, we know that we're going to have weather-related closures, staffing-related closures, um, a variety of different things that come up. So we're working with finance to create a better way to budget for that number, but you'll see that requested amount at four-twenty-two thousand. Um, that's what we would anticipate if we were open, full force all year long, no closures. Um, but knowing that we probably will have staffing decreases, um, facility closures due to weather, um, program interruptions, a variety of different things that come up. Um, moving on to page one-sixty-nine, um, I just wanted to point out uh, five-nine-oh-nine, um, under the Purchase Services and Other, you'll see that Agreements is now at zero. Um, Patrick kind of men- mentioned in his, all those agreements are now under one oh one, so that's why that amount is zero. And then also because we've had um, staffing changes, a restructure, and we've lost staffing in our department, we did put in for some administrative support to kind of help continue to offer the services that we provide out of our department. Um, moving on to one-seventy, um, so six-one-oh-nine, um, you'll see that's now at zero, so we because those are supplies, we did transfer all that money into our supplies, so six-one-one-nine. Um, and so that's why you'll see that budget at zero, because we anticipate that we'll use it for supplies, um, so we put in our supplies budget. Um, and then in six-one-one-nine, uh, you'll notice an increase from last year. Um, although we're not necessarily anticipating offering additional programs, we are anticipating cost increases for those supplies. Um, and supplies that come out of that are everything from propane at Bud King to markers at the East Rec. So it is a really wide variety of supplies that cover all of our facilities. Um, and then again, um, seven-three-oh-nine, Patrick covered those in his presentation. Um, and then moving down to Municipal Band, there's Employee Services there, so full-time and part-time staff and benefits. And then down to page one-seventy-one, you'll have the Senior Center, Friendship Center. So we do a full-time coordinator and one administrative assistant. Um, again, the advocates, although they are housed out of the Friendship Center, come out of two oh four, so I think that's important to point out.
Laura, I have a question. Um.
Yeah.
Are we not discontinuing the municipal band for next year?
No.
No.
Maybe Patrick or Chad can talk more about the band shell project.
So Mayor and Council, we would work with the band or suggest the band, sorry, Patrick, um, to continue operations so that we continue, for for no other reason, uh, we continue operating the municipal band and keep our street going. Um, but also then to provide, one approach is to provide the community concerts in different locations throughout the park system, and that that might be a unique feature for us, if the band shell is in fact under construction during their season.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
All right, continuing on to page one-seventy-two, um, with Friendship Center, Senior Center ser- um, Services, you won't see much change from the previous year, um, not too much of increase or decrease there. Um, I do want to point out, because I have gotten questions on this on occasion, on the bottom of one-seventy-two, fifty-nine oh six, um, that thirty-seven thousand, so that is specific to a bus trip that we take annually. Uh, we haven't done one for the last two years, that's why you'll see that there was zero um, spending in twenty twenty-one uh, because of the pandemic, but we are anticipating bringing that back in twenty twenty-three, and essentially money comes in and then money goes out to pay for Patrick. Um, and then moving on to one-seventy-three, um, and again, in that fifty-nine-oh-nine with Purchase Services, um, we do have uh, a contracted employee that manages our Wellness Center, so our health specialist, and then also um, fitness instructor, so that is what is housed under that one there. And then um, again, supply budgets, um, pretty much maintaining the same, just a slight decrease um, in our supplies only by a thousand dollars. Um, but otherwise, pretty much the same as last year, and then the last item, seventy-three-oh-nine, Patrick um, mentioned that. And then there is a change in fifty-nine, or sorry, six-one-seven-four-eight-one-oh-one-fifty-nine-oh-nine at the bottom of one-seventy-three with that contingency, um, and Jessica can answer probably the questions better than I ever could. Um, but that is a change from previous years, um, and something that I believe we're planning to do going forward for Recreation.
Any questions on that?
Second.
Motion from Eileen, second from Michelle. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Laura. Excellent job, Laura.
Very good.
Uh, Mayor and Council, I'll go through the Community Development Budget. Uh, and that includes planning and zoning, community development, and what we call Community Development Matching Funds. Those are the three uh, programs that uh, are are funded through the General Fund. Then we'll go through inspections and the Port Authority, and the Port Authority approved their budget at their last meeting. So beginning with revenues on page one and two, and I'll be brief and summarize quite a bit, but on pages one and two, we have things like sign permit fees, zoning fees. Um, if we sell maps, et cetera. Um, and what we do is do those on a historical basis of what we plan on to bring in. I will note on page two, three-three-one-oh-one, it's called Federal Grants, and I did want to give a little bit of clarification to that. That federal grant is from the State Historic Preservation Office in the amount of eight thousand dollars and are matching a That federal grant is from the State Historic Preservation Office in the amount of eight thousand dollars and our matching amount you'll see in the Planning Budget is two thousand. So with our money, we can leverage that. And the project is to have a design guide for historic homes. We do have residential districts, and it's in order to put together guidelines for residential rehab of historic properties. On page three, I do want to note that under three four one oh five. And I have some slides here, too. It's important to note here that the Port Authority reimburses the Community Development Budget for seventy five percent of the entire budget, so that's staff, supplies, services, et cetera. In addition to seventy five percent of the Community Development Budget, they cover a portion of City Manager, Finance Director, and City Engineer. And under three four one oh seven, that's an administrative cost that inspections pays to the Finance Department for all of the supportive services. We saw that last night as well. And on page four, two of the leases that we work on are a license agreement with Dahl. And that their entrance to their facility used to serve other properties, including a church. But when they created their campus there, it only now serves them, and they, we licensed that space to them. And then there's a latent radio for Garvin Heights, a radio tower lease on page four under three six two oh nine. I'm going to have Carlos Espinoza come up to review the Planning Budget with you, which starts on page twenty seven. And I do want to note that this is where we do have the money coming in for the housing study. Under one oh one, three four oh nine, on page twenty seven, halfway down the page. Excuse me, not that one. That, that's the historic grant, let's see. Oh, and we'll get to it when we get to it, I'll let Carlos do the budget on the next page.
Sure, good evening, Mayor and Council. So Planning Budget is pretty straightforward. Past two years, we've had the Comprehensive Plan and the Budget, total of one hundred twenty five thousand each year that will come off for next year. So that's kind of the reason why you're seeing the dip in numbers for next year. We anticipate after adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, likely second quarter twenty twenty three, a lot of internal staff work to take action on the recommendations that are identified in the Comprehensive Plan. So essentially hit the ground running, starting about midpoint of next year. In terms of our departmental expenditures, starting on page twenty seven, it really just has to do with the two planners, Luke, myself, as well as our GIS, I'm sorry, our Secretarial Support. Then you get down to Professional Services mid page, thirty four oh nine, and that's the Residential Guidelines for Historic Renovations that Lucy mentioned. You'll see the city share is only two thousand, federal shares through the State Historic Preservation Office is eight thousand. This is an awesome way for us to leverage our dollars. Moving on to page twenty eight. We see things as pretty consistent when it comes to telephone postage. Then under Education and Travel, we do have an increased budget, just reflecting the pandemic. And Planning Department hasn't gone anywhere in a while, so it's great to see how other cities do things. So we're requesting a little bit more funding for that. In addition, I am a Certified Planner, and Luke is applying to be a Certified Planner, and so we get certification maintenance credits whenever we attend conferences. Finally, under fifty nine oh nine, that's where the housing study dollars would come into play, that we're just under discussion there. But that is where the Comprehensive Plan was previously housed for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. So you see that was at a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for this year. Other than that, pretty straightforward, kind of getting back to operating as normal in twenty twenty three for the Planning Department. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Carlos.
Thank you, Carlos. Well, I'm going to save that for later. I do have a shot up here on the screen. These are the General Fund Accounts out of Community Development. And how we fared over the years, you do see the drop off because of the Comprehensive Plan. But I did want to note that CD Matching for the second year in a row, we are down one position, and that's the Community Development Specialist Position. We'll begin now on Community Development, which is on page sixty six. This is a very similar budget to the past year. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We use this budget for Professional Services, surveys, preparing land. It correlates with the Port Authority Budget. And we do have some memberships in the Economic Development Association of Minnesota. Again, that is to certainly see what others are doing. Are there any questions on sixty six, sixty seven? I will then have you turn to page sixty eight. This is what we call the CD Matching Fund. This fund is used for our housing programs, so you will see the ARPA Funding under Purchaser Services near the bottom of page sixty eight. And a small amount of technical services, because we'll need a little bit of help in administering this program, being that we are down the one position. Any questions? Okay. Let's see. I'm going to kind of summarize the next four funds, I'm happy to go through them with you in detail. However, we have these loan funds, there's a downtown loan fund to do facade improvements. There's an emergency fund that you'll see, that's for low and moderate income homeowners who might have a furnace go out in the middle of winter. The way these funds operate is if we have money in them, we can do projects, and if we don't have a cash balance, we don't. So we estimate what we're going to be doing in the, and it's clearly an S, you know, just a guess at what we're going to be doing. So starting on page eighty one is the Downtown Revolving Loan Fund. And on page eighty six is our Emergency Fund. This has been well utilized over the years, mainly water service or a furnace for someone of limited means. With that, I will turn to the Inspections Budget, which is on page one eighty seven, unless there's other questions.
George?
What line item, or maybe this, this is not your department, but funding for the landscaping on Mancito when the roundabouts are done?
I believe that's under Brian's. It wouldn't be within our budget.
Okay, that's in, that's in your budget, okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, Eileen.
So on page one eighty seven, we're on the Inspections Budget. Our Building Official, Chad Summers, here, if there's any questions. Here again, we estimate what our revenues are going to be, I will say we're on target for this year. We estimated quite well, we're at seventy percent of our revenues by the end of July. Any questions on revenues?
George?
I'd just like to say that Chad and his team of inspectors are doing a phenomenal job. Doing a very good job of it, so.
I couldn't agree more, so, thank you. So page one eighty seven and one eighty eight are the revenues. And then on page one eighty nine, we begin with the expenditures in the department. Now, I will say that we have the Building Official and three inspectors at this time. Last year at this time, we had the Building Inspector, Building Official and four inspectors. We still have it in this budget for an inspector, but when the last one left, we wanted to pause for a moment to see if we do need the help. We did have a spike in permits, as you know, over about a one and a half year period. So that is in with this budget, but we have not hired someone at this time. I will mention at the bottom of page one eighty nine, you see that City Administrative Service that the department pays out. On page one ninety. So the Building Official and Building Inspectors have to maintain their licensure, and that requires education and training. So under five eight zero nine, Education and Travel, there's two pieces there. One is the training for our inspectors. The second piece is our software, which is called EnterGov. We have a budget in there to do training each year within that system. Brad helps us put that together, it's great, but it is a totally different, separate system from our other systems. And again, our normal, we do have an inspection vehicle on page one ninety, one ninety one. So we're cycling out the vehicles that we have and also moving to, I believe, hybrid rentals. So and then the vehicle that will be giving up will be going to senior library, we usually have it go to another department.
I believe it's advocacy.
Advocacy. I will note on one ninety one, it says Other Purchase Services. What that is, or no, that's a contingency, excuse me. That's a Jessica question, so. Any questions on the Inspection Budget? I will then move on to the Port Authority Budget, which is in the back of your book, starting on page two eleven. I do have a slide up, I just wanted to point out to you, what I did here is I've shown you what the tax levy is that the Port Authority has had over the past years. So as you can see, we certainly aren't at our high point with what was proposed by the Port Authority. And the Port Commissioners felt that was reasonable and all agreed on that amount. Something's wrong, Brad, but that's okay. I just did want to point out, too, you know, budgets get kind of boring, so here's some fun information, but sorry, Jessica. So this is a project we worked on in twenty twenty. You see the value of the bill, the land and buildings was one and a half million. The value's over nineteen million. This is a one thousand one hundred fifty seven percent increase. Those are the things we shoot for in our department. And just for a small part of the budget that was explained last night, as the General Fund, we're about three point seven percent of the budget. So on page two eleven, I did describe our revenue sources, which include that proposed tax levy. So that's for the Port General Fund, in addition, remember the amount was five fourteen. We also have a levy for the airport bonds that the Port Authority helps pay for. On page two twelve. The Port Authority has a variety of sources of rents that come in, including in our harbor. We also have some license agreements. We're currently leasing the Pro Build Building to Winona County, so they can utilize that space while the jail is getting built. And following that, we have our unloading fees, so those are the tonnage fees at our harbor on three six three oh two. So those revenues come in to help run our operations. Our expenses begin on two thirteen. I will mention the Port Authority does have on line three three zero nine, the Assistant Fund, funding the Winona Main Street Program. And they have done that for, since its inception.
Pam, you have a question?
Yes, hi, Lucy. I have a question on the unloading fees that you were talking about over at the harbor. I noticed that it's two hundred and eighty thousand in twenty two, and suggested two hundred and seventy thousand in twenty three. Why would it be less? Are we not doing more business than last year?
We're a little bit slower this year, so I wanted, I tend to budget the revenue rather conservatively, you know, just in case. We're doing okay at the harbor, I just, our numbers are a little bit lower year to date, twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Lucy, isn't the majority of that business come in like, starting right about now?
So this income is from CD Corporation that leases the ports to docks.
Okay.
And so that consists of fertilizer and salt and gypsum and other products, not the egg products other than fertilizer.
Gotcha.
But the other docks become very busy with the outputs of the corn and soybeans coming up during harvest.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
On page two thirteen, we have our expenses, I'm happy to answer any questions. It's very similar to last year. On page two fourteen, I can describe what some of the funds that are being transferred out are for. We have a hundred and fifty thousand that's put into a capital expenditure fund, this is rather new, the last two years the port has done that so that they can have a fund to purchase property. And so we have started that, for example, this year we bought the Pro Build Building. We do have forty five thousand dollars, that's parking lot improvements, the Port Authority committed to for the HBC area to the north of their building and to the east of their building, where that's public parking after five and on weekends, and then parking for them during the day, work day. We also have at the bottom of page two fourteen, transfers out for Commercial Harbor and for Brownfields, and these get transferred into Funds nine four five and nine four six, still Port Authority Funds. But we use that as matching funds for either state bond money or for grants that we might seek.
Can you define Brownfield?
Yes, a brownfield is an area that is researched and light and contaminated, so there's a phase one, a phase two. And then in order to develop the land, you have to have a response action plan and submit it to MPC. and submit it to MPCA. And there's grant money available to help clean up those brownfields because deed promotes redevelopment. Your infrastructure is already there, so it's contaminated land.
Okay, thank you.
So I believe that covers the Port General Fund. I'll go through the next funds similar to how I did the community development. They're very specific and hard to anticipate what we'll do. But we have three revolving loan funds, a federal revolving loan fund. And we project a project within that fund on page 217. We have a state revolving loan fund on page 218 and 219. So we have some loan money coming in. You'll see on page 218 from loans that we have made. And then we anticipate making loans from this fund. This would be, for example, BCS. We had a loan recently, as we did with Midwest COPAC. And then our local revolving loan fund is on page 221. And this is the fund where the COVID loans were made. In addition to this, we can make loans that might not fit into the federal or state program guidelines. So it's a very valuable resource. On page, if I'm going too fast, just pause me, but on page 223, we have the airport. So at the bottom of the page, you'll see a transfer out that goes to a Public Works Capital account to pay for the bond for the airport runway that was discussed last night. On page 225, commercial harbor. We're quite hopeful. We wrote, there is a lot of federal infrastructure money out there. We had it in the budget last year, but we continue to look at those opportunities even though it isn't budgeted. So we continue to work on that. 946 is Riverbend Brownfields that we discussed. So again, that we use to leverage when we're applying for a grant to clean up property so it can be redeveloped. Starting on page 229, these are the TIF districts that the Port Authority has. The first one on Innovation Drive is for Windcraft. That TIF is performing well. It will likely end before its eight-year term. And when, when the commitment is made, we decertify the district, so the money goes back to the taxing bodies. On page 949, this is 102 Walnut, the building that had burned, that was former WNC Printing, that was bought and renovated. So page 231 represents that TIF. And then on page 233, 956 Mankato TIF. This is the TIF for, I called it the old holiday and the dilapidated hotel that was at the corner of Mankato and Highway 61 for three or four years. You know, it continued to dilapitate. Soils were bad during that build of the renewed Fairfield Inn. And so we do have a TIF there for some of the soil work that was done, and that's performing well.
Lucy, can you explain real quick how one TIF might perform well and one might not?
Sure. So first of all, I want to reassure you that we have all pay-as-you-go TIF districts. So if a TIF district doesn't perform, there's no money paid out. So that's a good conservative way to approach it. So let's say you anticipated building 40 units of housing and 10,000 square feet of commercial space. And the market slows down, so you do 20 units of housing. You're not finished with it, and you did half the commercial space. But in our projections, we thought it would build out faster. That would be an example of why it might perform slower.
Okay.
However, you know, we don't have issues with any of them because of the pay-as-you-go model.
And then talk about how they would perform well. Like you mentioned Windcraft. If was doing very well, is that because market value is changing?
Right. So their market value of their property has increased consistently. They pay their taxes and that the money coming in, it's growing faster than we anticipated in our projection, so it'll be paid off a little bit earlier.
Gotcha. And where do projections come from? Are those guidelines that we have to follow? Or are there something that staff develops or?
So Mayor and Council, we have Baker Tilly assist us with all of our TIF or abatement districts. And they do an analysis of us, of the project based on the Winona County Assessor's value and, and the data they have for the city, school, county for taxes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Caesar, you got that?
Yes.
Great. Joking, sorry.
That, that's all I have.
I'd move tentative.
Oh. Yeah, please.
Okay, Lucy, can we go back to inspections? So I've had contact with inspections a number of times, and it's been great, good to work with, fair process. What ongoing, so questioned you, what, in the context that I believe, I believe it is going well. What ongoing efforts are we making to, to provide a better experience to the public that we serve? Related to inspections, related to pulling permits, related to rental inspections? Do we have online offerings? Do we, you know, the, certainly this wouldn't be reflective of Winona, but it may be reflective of other governmental agencies that they can be difficult to work with. I think that's a fair comment. What ongoing efforts are we making to be especially in the inspections department to being user-friendly, easy to work with, and maybe providing some online self-serving, self-service offerings?
So we do have all of our forms and information online. Our EnterGov model is set up that we can implement permits that one can apply for online. We're very careful about that because they have to meet code requirements, and sometimes we like to discuss that with people. We do have that capacity and capability to do that. I will say that about five years ago, a Port Authority Commissioner asked me for what our model is because he wanted to show it to Rochester because it took a lot longer to get a site plan review or a building permit. Of course, they're a larger city. We turn around our plans, I believe, very quick. Rental certifications, we, we work with landlords if they're challenged with, you know, lately it's been, you need to change out your window. Well, what happens to the window order? You know, it's back order, back order. So I think we work pretty well with the landlords and with developers and building owners. Zoning changes. We have very good people who answer people's questions. We're also charged with code enforcement, and, and that's an area that, you know, is always there and seems to continue to grow year by year, so.
Well said. I mean, my, my personal experience has been positive, but I wanted, I wanted, wanted to hear you say it, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, George?
Yeah, I'd just simply like to say that if not for the success of the Port Authority, we'd be looking at a much different budget tonight, overall, so.
Yes, thank you.
And now I would move tentative approval of this budget. Please, no amendments. We're good.
Motion for Michelle, second from Eileen. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Lucy and Chad.
Very good.
Or? Yeah. And Carlos. He's gone. Oh, there he is. Nick, I'll thank you later.
Thanks.
I'm sorry.
Who are you waiting for here? Holy smokes.
In my head, I'm going, who's next?
Come on, people, be ready.
Don't sleep on the city manager's. Okay, we start on page one, which certainly was discussed last night. Where our general property taxes, state grant LGA. And then on page five, we do outline where what we consider reserve sources are coming in. In this case, it's facility fund, equipment fund, and then ARP. And as we mentioned last night as well, within the utility funds, so. Again, if there's not any questions there, I'll continue on. Page six is the Mayor and Council budget. Again, there aren't any really significant changes here. I would note that we did receive some requests from what we would consider outside agencies for assistance with their programming and their services be provided. We did not increase those outside services, specifically in that section of 5904 and 5909. We did do a small reduction to the sister cities items, certainly without, we didn't do that without some discussion with those individuals. And again, if, if that travel and returns and some of the funding that's required for that, we certainly will add that back into the budget. Otherwise, Mayor and Council has stayed relatively steady. Page nine is Merit Board. We've reduced that funding completely typically. Any of the advertising services or other services that we've done for employment, we charge that back to the department, so. Page 13 is the City Manager's Budget. Aside from what we would consider, and we've talked about quite a bit, the employee service changes across all the departments. This budget has stayed again relatively consistent with, I would say, no changes other than those employee services I've just noted. Page 25 is Human Resources. Again, this budget has stayed relatively level. And there are really primarily no changes to this budget as well. 41 is our Health and Safety Coordinator budget. Again, I think this is a reminder for Council, this is primarily by name, Paul Douglas, that does the work out of this area for the city. Again, this helps obviously with health and wellness of our employees and safety, first and foremost of our employees. Again, helps with our workers' comp costs. So this is, in my mind, budget well spent. We move to page 74. Again, mentioned this last night, this is our General Fund Reserve budget. As you can tell, again, there's zero dollars coming from the reserve fund. Just want to make sure that we noted that again. Then we move into the Internal Service Funds, which start on page 193. Unless there's questions about the Internal Service Funds, I would just note that we, we know these in the budget because these are where the transfers and transfers in, in and out happen for the things that we've already described. If it's a facility fund for ban shell example, that it is in here. If we have really transfers in and transfers out from these four funds, the equipment replacement fund, the facility fund, infrastructure and park revolving. So that's really what is shown within those budgets. Unless there's any other questions. Again, I think I did the majority of my presenting last night.
Well, I'd move tentative approval of the City Manager's Budget.
Motion for Michelle, second from Pam. Any questions or discussion?
George? Just one question. The, the Mayor City Council budget, does that reflect an increase?
It does not.
It does not, okay.
And I'm not, let's see, hesitating here, sorry. I'm not sure that you could this year because it is an election year, and so that's why, another reason why it stays flat.
Okay.
You, you can, but it has to be adapted prior to the general election. So you have September, October. So you have four meetings to introduce and pass an ordinance to change it.
Thank you, Monica. Could I not recommend that?
Could I make a motion now to freeze it as what it is right here stated tonight?
I'd second that, that's fine. You mean for the next election cycle, for the next budgeting cycle?
It would not go up for two years.
Right.
So it would stay the same for 23 and 24.
Correct, correct.
It's not like we get paid a lot anyway, so. So, yeah, okay. Motion from George, second from Michelle. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor for that amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Amendment passes?
Okay, duly noted. We'll make that notation for 2023 and 2024.
Thank you. Did we vote on City Manager budget?
You did.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Hi Jessica.
Do you want us to bring it to Council for a formal vote, just so it's on?
If we need one, you know, if we need one.
You don't, but.
Well, then, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Progress.
And Mayor and Council, certainly, last but not least, Jessica from Finance.
Hey, Mayor and Council. I was just gonna go over the line items that had some changes to. So the first one, when compared to the 2022 budget. So the first one that I wanted to bring up is on page three. About three-fourths of the way down the sheet, admin fee lodging tax is 20,000 for 2023, and this is bringing that back up to a pre-pandemic level. That's what we're seeing in lodging tax, so we increase that revenue accordingly. The next one is on page four, interest revenues. The city is limited in the investments that we're able to make by state statute. But, so we invest primarily in money market and treasuries, and both of those have been increasing in value, so I increased the revenue for those. On page five, under Other Revenues, 36309, I'm just showing the equipment certificate revenue coming into the general fund. And then in Transfers In, on the same page, under 39109, we have the transfers in from the appropriate funds. So the facilities transfer in will need to be adjusted to the 300,000 rather than 285,000. And the equipment, or excuse me, the, the recovery grant will have a transfer in of an additional 285,000 for, both of those items are for the band, the ban shell project.
Jessica, in general, can you just, like, from a 30,000-foot view, give us an idea of, because this, it seems like this here, we're doing a lot of changes in terms of where funds are being put, where funds are being transferred and moved. What overall is that doing for us as a city? What, what is that doing for our budget?
Are you asking why we're transferring between funds?
Yeah, you know, like, I mean, on an individual level, we have clarification. Why are we putting this money here? Why are we putting there?
Sure.
By doing these changes, and I know By doing these changes, a- and I know that you and Chad and staff have been working on these. Can you just kind of encapsulate why we're doing these things for the public?
Sure. So um, we have a. Special revenue fund for the recovery grant so that we can account for those um expenses. According to the restrictions that are put on in place by the US Treasury Department. Um, we also have transfers in from facilities and equipment. So currently, um, our policy is that any excess. Budget from the prior year be divided evenly between the four um. Uh, internal service funds that Chad mentioned earlier, which are the equipment fund, facilities fund, park revolving and. Infrastructure fund. And so when we replace or ma- or um make improvements related to those funds. Then we can transfer those dollars from those funds. It it really just helps to make sure, to make sure that we're being accountable for the those dollars.
Sure. And and that those funds can't be spent on, not inappropriate, but on things that they weren't necessarily meant for initially.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you, Jessica.
Yep. Um, the next item I was going to mention is on page eighteen. It's um the last item that falls um over two pages, so it's on eighteen and nineteen. Data processing services. Um, our software maintenance has been quoted at an increased twenty thousand dollars per year. Um, so that line item has been increased. And on page twenty-one, we have the server switches. Um, we've decided to handle that project over two years, so we will do half of the project in twenty-twenty-three and the other half in twenty-twenty-four. Um, so that's why it was reduced from the requested hundred thousand.
Uh, sorry, Steve?
Yeah.
I I think you're, tell me if I'm wrong, uh, if we're to this point, what what do we decide on doing a a a adjournment discussion related to spending money on cybersecurity?
The cybersecurity insurance is still in the budget.
Okay. Um, are we doing any any other upgrades uh um to protect ourselves from becoming cyber victims?
So we had a a big project this year um to upgrade to Microsoft three sixty-five. And.
Somewhere in there.
And that project um really helped with our um. It's to keep things more secure within our system and in compliant with uh PCI regulations.
Okay, okay. It's it's so critical that we talk about this and and that we're we're. You know, I I have trust and faith and 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 who we're working with and 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 that we're doing it, but these things can be devastating.
Right.
So, thank you.
I also would add that um part of our training budget is to continue our IT coordinators. Um, training in the cybersecurity. He is currently working towards achieving a cybersecurity certificate.
Yeah. Um, I guess final point on that is, um, you know, I'd I'd certainly mu- much rather be spending money on on prevention. Making sure that we're 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 spending that. Um, you you can all laugh if you want, but you don't want to actually use the insurance. That's. So, yeah, thanks. Pam?
Yeah, just a quick question. What is PCI?
Wait, Brad, do you know what that stands for? Um, but it's it's related to um processing our credit cards. We were required to be PCI compliant for our credit card processing. And it's a scan on our network that looks for vulnerabilities. So regardless of whether or not we need to do a PCI compliance. Um, it is very beneficial to do that because the scan itself looks for. Um, issues that we might have on our network. So then we run the scan and um it comes. It may come back with some issues that we can then work on to prevent cyber attacks.
PCI, payment card industry. But um, yeah, we we have to submit every quarter um information about that on our network and make sure we're compliant with that.
Any other questions?
So on page eighty-eight, we have the recovery grant. Um, and that one again will be adjusted to reflect the change that we discussed earlier with the band shell improvement. Um, so you can look or you can, you can see on the transfer out on page eighty-nine that we have. Um, several of the items that we'll be spending in twenty-twenty-three listed. Um, the band shell currently is not listed, so it'll be added to that list and that revenue will be transferred to the general fund. I guess that's that's all I had for um listed for items to talk about. Do, does anybody have any questions?
No, but I I would move tentative approval of your budget.
Motion from Michelle, second from Eileen. Any other questions? Comments?
I.
George?
Just to, uh, just to compliment that Jessica and her team, I think, are doing a very, very good job. You were kind of like a relief pitcher coming in in the World Series game and uh. You know, got us back on track, so job well done to your whole department.
Thanks, George.
Michelle?
I just wanted to thank you all too, because I know it was probably. Extra stress to get us those booklets so early, but it certainly made this process easier for me. I hope for the rest of the council too, because. I was able to go through and look at things and get a handle on it. So I really appreciate the extra time you took to do that. Um, I thought it made this process easier too.
I'm I'm glad we um, we really thought it was important to get those to you as soon as we could, so.
Thank you. And I, excellent job on the budget. I mean, coming into tough circumstances and. I'm I'm really pleased with what you were able to do, and it doesn't hurt that we have ARP funds and an equipment bond that we can work with. To get some things done that have been on the slate for a while, so thank you.
Thanks, Michelle.
Steve, you.
I want to echo the same thing. Uh, over the past year, you've been great to work with. I've asked you lots of questions, phone calls, emails. Come to see you and you, you you walk me right through it and I appreciate it, so well done.
Thanks, Steve.
Eileen?
Oh, I just wanted to say that on top of all the heaps of compliments, I can appreciate how difficult it is to write a budget when you're only halfway through the year. And try and predict what even the rest of this year will look like and then next year, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Eileen.
I, I did, of course, you've done a great job. Um, do you need a new cart for next year? Jessica rolls around City Hall with a little cart full of rulers and budget books and calculators and all kinds of stuff. I've, I'm in here enough that I get to see the work that all of staff has done on this budget. Um, I think one thing that. Is very clear, and you might hear me say this as we approve budget tentative and then move into final budget. So I apologize if I repeat myself, but. There is no frivolous spending that's being done within the city of Winona. I I can guarantee that. Every one of our staff is cautious when they're spending taxpayer money. Every department head is scrutinizing their budgets. And they're going over everything with a fine-tooth comb. And then on top of it, we've got Jessica, her team, and Chad. To go through it again. And my last question would be this. Chad, how much of the budget have you memorized? Tentative budget, I should say.
Memorized?
Yeah, about half.
Uh, Mayor and Council memorize. Half.
Yeah. How much have you memorized?
Probably half.
Yeah.
Together, together, we can do some pretty quick recall.
Yeah, take a budget, go through it, and if you've memorized half of that, that shows how much work has been put into this. So really, again, thank you to all of staff, top to bottom, for all the work that you put in on this.
And I've been through many budgets, but this one uh was matched up good, laid out well, and it was very, very easy to follow. When we first started budgets, we had two books. And other supplement uh paper coming with, but this was laid out very well, very easy to follow, so.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, I just, if I could. One closing remark, because I I appreciate the comments, uh, and I I would assume that staff does as well. Uh, it's good to hear that. Um, I would say though that the budget is a large process from the internal staffing level, but. To return that praise, this is a partnership. It's it's a collaborative effort to put a budget forward, to bring it to a governing body, have them review. Have them, you know, our job really to make sure that you understand the budget. Um, I I've appreciated this approach. I hope I I at least picked up on a couple of things that the process, giving you budget books early, et cetera, really helps you. Um, make sound decisions about the budget, so we'll, we'll carry that forward. But again, I I look at that, this is a collaborative approach with staff and the council. So again, I appreciate your work on the budget as well.
Oh, thanks, Chad. We just show up. All right, so we had, uh, did we vote on the, on the finance? All right, we're all done. I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you very much.
Quick question.
Yeah, please.
Uh, a separate approval for that senior advocacy, eleven thousand dollar. Increase uh to the tax levy.
So that was within the adjustment that was made of, I think, when Laura presented. So as a clarifying point for the council, the the next step in the budget would be September sixth. And that will set the, again, the, the um proposed tax levy, that would be the truth and taxation hearing. And then again, we can't go above that amount, we can certainly go below. And what Jessa- Jessica's referring to is that adjustment in the advocacy that would be presented that evening. And so I think I alluded to this the first night that um. The, the uh city tax levy is nine point three, technically nine point two-six. We'll make that adjustment. You may see a tax levy come in then be, when we make that adjustment for September sixth, you may see the tax levy come in between. Nine point three and nine point four-six. Uh, based on that adjustment and then any other housekeeping items that we did. I think most of the other housekeeping items. Had zero impact in the tax levy except for that advocacy one. So that evening, you will see the, the proposed tax levy for twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. Very good. Thank you again. Good night, everyone.